Good afternoon. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate your participation. This is going to be the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone Ordinance Public Workshop. We're going to provide an opportunity for people to ask questions, make comments, even suggestions. It's a workshop designed to go till 6:00 PM, and because it's a workshop, there'll be no action taken by the Board of County Commissioners tonight. The planned presentation right now is for Mr. Dice to stand up and give us the initial idea of what we're looking at. And following that, we've got a special presenter, Ms. Catherine Gross, who's going to take 10 minutes to talk about what the aspects of the coastal dune lakes mean to everyone down here. We have a sign-up sheet, and we've got more questioners apparently than what we've got time for with a five-minute time limit, so I'll ask the board what they want to do on that. But we'll have each of the people that's on this in the order that they signed up being given the opportunity to come up to the microphone and, again, ask their questions, make their comments or suggestions.
Mr. Chairman, in light of the number of people that won't have an opportunity to speak, I would suggest that we have the time limit at three minutes, in lieu of five, to allow more people to speak. Make a motion to that effect.
Set.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our time limit for each person speaking will be three minutes, and it'll be controlled over here. At any point in time, the Chair will recognize any Commissioner that wants to make a comment, speak, or ask a question, so that can happen at any time. Mr. Dice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. What we're trying to, with the current draft you have in front of you, we have two changes proposed in the Land Development Code and the Comp Plan as it relates to the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone. In the Comp Plan, as you may know, the current language has a 25 percent maximum disturbed area basically in the Comp Plan. We are proposing to remove that language and move that completely into the Land Development Code. The Land Development Code has more detailed regulations in the Land Development Code, and we're proposing to move that number from 25 percent of an area you can disturb to 50 percent of the area to disturb. Also, in the Land Development Code, there is some language dealing with plats that have, that may have graphical descriptions of protections that were approved at the time the plat was approved, that we are recognizing, and that's something that I think is more of a vested rights-type issue with that. Also, in the Land Development Code, we are requesting an addition of, because once you move it from the Comp Plan to the Land Development Code for the numerical value, it does allow that to have a variance process attached to it. We attended a public meeting with the South Walton Community Council a month or so ago, and there was a lot of concern about the variance process. One of the things we tried to do to help provide some more stricter guidance on that would be if you have a variance of any of the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone requirements going from the Board of Adjustments, we have asked that it be a supermajority, so five out of seven would have to concur to pass any sort of variance that would relate to the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone. We have, as far as the Comp Plan, we're not changing anything dealing with the shoreline hardening, or the buffers, or anything else. The 100-foot buffer is still there, or if it's a shallow lot of record, that provision still applies. We're not proposing to touch anything in the comprehensive plan except for the numerical value of the clearing or the disturbed area. So we're leaving that pretty much intact except for, again, that numeric value while leaving majority of the information into the Land Development Code. We try to take, after hearing the comments from the meeting we attended, we tried to take a more of a minimalist approach to this. We are trying to solve a problem. Through the years, the interpretation of this provision has been varied through the years, and so we have some development that, quite frankly, doesn't comply as they're built right now. To remedy that situation, we've also included in the Land Development Code a provision that allows, if it's destroyed by a firestorm or otherwise, it allows any home to be built right back on its same footprint. And so that's also in the draft we have for the Land Development Code. Again, the interpretation over the years has been varied. About a year or so ago, we had an issue that came up that allowed us to take a close, hard look at the interpretation of the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone. We had many people in that meeting, and essentially what we discovered is that maybe we hadn't been looking at it the appropriate way. And when we reanalyzed our position on that, and we were applying it as it's written, strictly as it's written, 25 percent as it's currently written, and that 25 percent covers the footprint, it covers the driveways, it covers pools, all those things. We had some lots that really narrowly restricted, you know, how much could be built there. And many of these lots had been purchased for many years, and then with expectations of a certain kind of development to go forward. And when they were coming in to be permitted, we discovered this is turning into a bit of a problem. So that's why we are suggesting that we increase that number slightly to 50 percent. Again, along the Coastal Dune Lake, we're not proposing any kind of changes to the buffer at all, so the area immediately adjacent to the Coastal Dune Lake will not be modified, it'll be in its existing form. And that's kind of a synopsis of kind of where we are, how we got there.
Another question. And with the LBC, when you start looking at that 50 percent, or it's 25 right now, does it make any difference as whether the surface of the driveways or the decks are impervious or pervious?
It makes no difference about impervious surface. It speaks a disturbed area basically, so it's any kind of vegetative disturbance. And that's a bit of a misperception, I think, that it talks about impervious surface, it does not.
Right.
Now, with that, you know, in the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code, each land use district has their impervious surface maximums, which will not change, we're not proposing to change that at all. For example, if you're in the District Residential Preservation, the maximum impervious surface is 60 percent. We have a lot of lots on the dune lakes which are RP. And again, the maximum impervious surface would also be applied as well as the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone requirements. So in that case, the maximum impervious surface would be 60 percent. But when it speaks to the, but in the Coastal Dune Lake language, it does not speak to impervious surface, it speaks to disturbed area basically.
I have a question. Go ahead.
Let me follow up. Wayne, I think the whole intent of the impervious structures is to minimize runoff for a particular piece of property, correct, going into the dune lakes? But if you had a driveway or a set of decks out there that weren't impervious, it'd allow that seepage into the ground, and I would think that's what we, why would we include that in the maximum 50 percent if it is, in fact, pervious?
And Commissioner, that's a great question. The language, as it's written, speaks to vegetative clearing in the preserved area.
I understand that.
Right, but your point is well-taken. I do agree, if the whole goal is to maximize impervious surface, that would be something that I probably should look at as we go forward. The current language speaks directly to the vegetative clearing.
Disturbing of it, right. But maybe we ought to look at that direction.
That's exactly right, yes. And that's been some of the points we've heard through various, through email and different meetings, is that impervious surface is very important, you know, that we should be looking at that probably more closely than we do the vegetative clearing.
Commissioner Jones?
On the variances, I know we haven't decided, but in the event we do, it says the granting of a variance may only occur with a concurring vote of five members of the Board of Adjustment. I know there's some discussion about looking at hearing officers, so if we do decide, I want to hear what everybody has to say about the variance, but if we do decide, I would like to, you know, have language in there, or future hearing officer if the board so deems or something like that.
Yes, ma'am. And I think if that does, I'll defer to Mr. Davis on this, but if it does go forward, I think any ordinance around the hearing officer would have to take into account all the boards, and that language will be amended, I'm sure, as we were to go forward with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Ms. Catherine Gross? Ms. Gross is going to be given 10 minutes for her presentation.
Thank you very much for the time.
You may want to use the microphone.
Excuse me. Is that better? Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today. As you mentioned, my name is Catherine Gross. I'm currently working as a research ecologist with a specialty in coastal systems. I've recently completed my master's thesis at the University of West Florida in the Department of Environmental Studies, and that was done through a two-year research study on the coastal dune lakes and their water quality. So I'm hoping that some of the results from my study will help to inform the discussion on this issue tonight and to help guide future management for the coastal dune lakes. Most of our residents probably are not aware that 10 of our lakes did not meet FDEP standards for water quality when they were assessed in 2010. The listed cause of impairment was related to nutrient pollution. At that time, no action was taken by FDEP because the nutrient dynamics and processes in the coastal dune lakes were not well-understood, and so they couldn't confirm the causes of impairment, so they basically were deferred until they could conduct further study. However, in 2015, the dune lakes are scheduled to be assessed again, and we know a lot more now than we did in 2010. So if, once FDEP can verify the causes of impairment, Walton County will be responsible for mitigation and restoration in those lakes that are impaired under the Clean Water Act and the Florida Watershed Restoration Act. Most people are probably familiar with nutrient pollution, even if they don't necessarily know the term. We have really three primary sources of nutrients in our coastal dune lake watersheds, and the ecological effects are very well-studied. And essentially, when you have an excess of nutrients going into a system, there is an overgrowth of plant material that then chokes the system. So we can see this in the form of very thick algae mats along the shoreline that also blanket the sea grasses, and then when these, all this plant material decomposes, it consumes oxygen in the water so that it can no longer support fish populations or other aquatic organisms. We've already seen these effects in Oyster Lake, as the bottom photo can show you. The economic effects of nutrient pollution are not as well-known but very well-studied, and the biggest impact to communities and local governments is the cost of restoration. The Coastal Dune Lake study actually grew out of a class project to investigate nutrient pollution in Oyster Lake. There was a lot of findings that are significant to management but relevant to today's discussion, our nutrient concentrations and response. All the lakes are different, and what you can see on this plot is concentrations of chlorophyll, total nitrogen, and total phosphorus in the coastal dune lakes. Nitrogen and phosphorus are the nutrients that are primarily responsible for nutrient pollution, and chlorophyll is a measure of the plant material that's in the water column, and it's used by FDEP as an assessment mechanism to determine impairment. So if the chlorophyll concentrations exceed a certain threshold, then the system is determined to be impaired. What this plot is showing is increasing chlorophyll concentrations from left to right. And although there's wide variation in the concentrations, there is a pattern, is if you look on the left side of the plot, those lakes are the ones primarily that are located within our state parks and have protected watersheds. The lakes on the right side with the highest concentrations of chlorophyll and nutrients are generally those lakes that are the oldest development and the most intense development in their watershed, so we can see the increasing impacts of loading. The key point for management here is that the lakes have to be managed individually. If we try to apply a one-size-fits-all solution to all of the coastal dune lakes, we are likely to allow continued impairment in some of the lakes and overly protect some other lakes. So a case-by-case assessment will be necessary. It's well-established that water quality in aquatic systems is directly related to development in the watershed. Impervious surface was mentioned, it's directly linked to impervious surface, but this effect is compounded in the riparian zone, which in the literature is defined as approximately 150 meters from the shoreline, that's 500 feet. There's various reasons for these effects, and the graphics are illustrating, on the left side, that's an undisturbed naturally-vegetated riparian buffer that is allowed to filter the water and remove nutrients and contaminants before it enters the system. On the right side, when we develop, we build the houses, pavement, and then we replace that highly-capable filter of natural vegetation, we replace it with turf and exotic plants, and it doesn't do such a good job of filtering. Stormwater retention systems are often offered as a solution, but these systems actually don't work as well as we think. They're very good at retaining stormwater and retaining sediments, but the research has shown that they do not filter nutrients as effectively as native vegetation. Nitrogen concentrations are only reduced by about half, and phosphorus concentrations are often increased as it goes through these systems. So DEP specifically cautions against placing stormwater retention systems in close proximity to aquatic, to lakes and streams because of this effect of compounding nutrient concentrations. Western Lake actually has a very good example of riparian management that's relevant to the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone. The watershed is very intensely developed around the east, or the northeastern lobe of Western Lake. And with a closer view and an overlay of the parcel maps, you can see this is very high-density residential development, but they did leave a substantial, undisturbed, naturally-vegetated riparian buffer around this lobe of the lake and around the tributary. So the result is that the water quality in this part of Western Lake, even with this very intense development, is very good, has some of the lowest concentrations of any coastal dune lake, and it plots down better actually than some of the lakes in the state parks. So back to the impaired waters list and what this means for management. When FDEP verifies a lake for listing on the impaired waters list, a total maximum daily load has to be developed. Nutrient loads are assessed, nutrient load reductions are calculated in order to restore the system to good water quality status, and then those load allocations are assigned to permitted discharge within those watersheds. The National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, it's known as NIPDIS, is the permitting authority for those discharges, and Walton County's storm sewer system falls under those permitted activities. So if those lakes are designated as impaired, DEP will require implementation of additional best-management practice to reduce nutrient loads in those water bodies, and those practices can be expensive to implement. So what can we do? We now, in this year's assessment, we have the data, we have proven scientific models, and we have a much better understanding of how the coastal dune lakes process nutrients, so we can conduct a comprehensive study to quantify the effect of various development scenarios. So if 25 is a consideration, or 50 is a consideration, or whatever the percent, if they want to change it to impervious surface, we can model those impacts and give you all the tools to make effective decisions for future management. So a sound policy that's based on a scientific study will not only comply with federal and state regulations for water quality, but should also be defensible in court and will protect the county and the taxpayers from costs of mitigation or restoration. So what I would, I guess, suggest to the board is if we could delay decision-making on this issue until this comprehensive study can be conducted, and that way you and the planners will have the tools to devise a good method forward for development in each of the lakes.
Thank you, Ms. Gross. Commissioners, do you have any questions for her? Thank, you have one?
Not at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time, sir.
Okay. Barbara Valentino, you're the first person to come, and when you come up, for the record, please spell your last name for the clerk.
Barbara Valentino, V-A-L-E-N-T-I-N-O. We live on Alligator Lake, built our house in 1991. I apologize, I don't know too much about this, this is all new to us, but I do have some questions. If a home or structure was permitted by the county and built before the plan adoption date of November 7, 1996, is that home or structure grandfathered in as-is?
Mr. Dice?
If the home is conforming, there's no problem. If the home does not conform to the current regulations the county has, it would be considered a legal non-conforming use. If it were to be destroyed, the home would have to comply with the current standards.
My next question, if only a portion of your property is within this 300 feet setback, do the restrictions apply only to that portion of the property that's in the zone or the entire property?
Yes, ma'am, but only the portion that's within the zone.
Oh, so only the portion that's within that zone that it applies to?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And what does the footprint include? I'm unclear on that, like decking, pools, landscaping?
The footprint would be just considered the exterior of the home. A pool would be considered part of the footprint, in my opinion. Any kind of decking and so forth would not, it'd be just the primary home itself.
Okay. All right, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valentino. Lisa Bucci?
I'm hiring my mic.
Okay. Alan Powdermaker. Welcome back.
Thank you. Nice to be back.
And for purposes of Rutha Clark, please spell your name for her.
Yeah, my name is Alan Powdermaker, P-O-W-D-E-R-M-A-K-E-R, and I've lived at 118 Lake Point Drive on Eastern Lake and have for 20 years, very happily. And I'm not a scientist, and I have watched a lot of the activity trying to take place on the lakes over the years and not getting as far as it should, particularly in terms of the lakes' ability to communicate with the Gulf, which they're supposed to, and having been interfered with. I don't doubt the scientific approach to understanding some of the factors that create nutrients and so forth. However, I do know that if we sat around and waited as long as we have over the last years to investigate dune, our coastal dune lakes, and in most cases get nowhere, we would be affecting the economic impact of over 3,000 lots that are pieces of property that are on our coastal dune lakes. I don't think that there's any real evidence at this point that can indicate that, you know, what is a proper amount, whether is it 25, or is it 50, or is it 75, or is it 80? I personally do not think that a percentage works, and I don't think the percentage works particularly in the comprehensive plan. I don't think it belongs there. I think the comprehensive plan is there to define stormwater runoff, stormwater problems, setbacks, and issues such as this. The Land Development Code has been put forth to investigate specific issues and problems that might occur within the building and in the construction area. And I'm going to stick to this so we stay within our time. So I think that the Land Development Code addressing these issues without putting arbitrary percentages on anything just makes a lot of sense, because as our expert just said, every one is different, every lake is different, every piece of property is different, and the effect on those properties are significantly different. So I think that would create some possibility of problems. I did say that there are over 3,000 properties on these lakes, most of them, such as Eastern Lake, where I live, is approximately 80, 85 percent developed and has been for years and years. Most of our homes were built well before the...
That's your time.
Oh, okay, most of our...
Thank you, Mr. Powdermaker.
Tough name to spell. J-A-M-E-S. I'm Nancy James, and I don't understand all the scientific ramifications of what's been presented, but I did like the woman who spoke and gave all the rationale for how we need to protect each lake individually, and these are, like the headline in the paper said yesterday, the jewels of 30A, and we have come late to appreciating them. You know, nobody's talked about them in the beginning, they were just there, and now we know that they're worldwide. There's nothing else like them in the whole world, they're a treasure. So all I want to say is I think they should be given the maximum protections that we can, and I liked what she said about postponing decisions until we have the latest scientific evidence on what would be the best way to protect each lake individually. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. Pat Carlisle?
I'm Pat, thank you.
It's V-A-L-E-N-T-I-N-O. So in this paragraph eight on page four, it says that all developments shall be set back from the mean or ordinary high-water line at least 100 feet. So if the lot is 125 feet deep, and the mean or ordinary high water is 20 feet from the edge of the normal water, does that mean that the development has five feet of depth to be placed upon?
Mr. Dice?
I'm not sure I follow the question. Could you repeat the question, please? Page five.
Question is, if the lot is only 125 feet deep and the development shall be set back 100 feet?
In the cases of lots that are less than 200 feet in depth, there is a shallow lot of record provision, and you take 25 percent of the depth of the lot, and that calculation is your buffer.
So does that mean that the 100 feet is eliminated from a requirement?
The 100 feet gets reduced based on, again, based on the calculation that you have, like I said before, any lots that are less than 200 feet in depth, if they qualify for the shallow lot of record provision, and you take the percentage, 25 percent of the length, the depth of your lot, that calculation gives you what that buffer has to be in that case. So in the case you gave, 31.25 feet.
Would be substituted for the 100 feet.
Right.
Where is the formula for calculating that?
It's just the, based on the, you have the provision from the, the formula's given in the shallow lot of record provisions, it's in the Comp Plan.
Okay.
But again, that language, as it is, that language we're not proposing to change at all, that's the current language that we have today. That language we're not proposing to change. Oh, yeah. Yeah, and I'll read the, this is from the Comp Plan, Mr. Chairman, may I read this from the Comp Plan? It's under 4.0302D Land Development Code. It says, "Under exemptions, singularity development on existing lots of record established before December 28, 1992 that lack sufficient depth to meet the above-listed buffer requirements for inlets, creeks, rivers, canals, and coastal dune lakes in Tautachi Bay shall be subject to a reduced buffer." A lot lacking sufficient depth means a lot that is 200 feet or less, such lots shall be subject to a minimum buffer of 25 feet or 25 percent of the depth of the lot, whichever is greater. Clearing within this buffer setback shall be limited to a maximum swath of 10 feet for access purposes.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Valentino. I struggle to call somebody's name, is it Carol Gary? Thank you. Thank you.
I live on Eastern Lake, and I'm here to speak for the lakes, because I love them. They have been called jewels, but I think of them more as lakes, watery things. I'd like to know the name of the woman who did the study. I didn't understand that from, could you spell that for me?
Her name is Catherine Gross. Catherine, C-A-T-H-E-R-I-N-E.
Yes.
And her last name is Gross, G-R-O-S-S.
Okay. I would like to know where the study, the document that you were quoting from, where is that? Is that on the web that I could read?
Which document?
I thought you were quoting from something, you said you had...
The full study will be posted on the Choctawatchu Basin Ollons website. It's not there yet, but it will be up soon.
Good, okay. How long will this study take to complete?
Ms. Geary, address the board, please.
Oh, okay. She said she wanted us to wait till the study was complete, which sounded like a wonderful idea, but another delay is not good, so I just wondered how long that would take to complete.
If I'm correct, I believe she said that during 2015, the current year we're in, we'll get the new study, is that correct?
The FDEP will conduct an assessment this year as part of their cycle process, but the study that I was proposing will be something different than that.
Thank you.
I could not hear that. Could you repeat that?
FDEP will be doing the study during 2015.
So we could...
So as soon as they're done and they publish, we'll have the answers.
So it might be a year from now.
That's not what she said. She said that that's not the study she's talking about. You're talking about something else, is that what, yeah. She's talking about that's going on, but she's talking about another study. And I didn't, yeah, I didn't understand that either. Like, who's doing the study, when is it going to be done, you know, that kind of same questions you have. So maybe, yeah, when's it going to be completed, and who's doing it, and yeah.
Do you have an answer?
If I understood correctly, I think Ms. Gross was proposing that the county have a study done on individual lakes. And that's separate and apart from the FDEP assessment of the lake's water quality, which I think is what she was suggesting was happening during 2015.
Thank you.
That would be a county study on each individual lake to find out what was, okay, I got that.
So that's a pretty large proposal that you would have to have more meetings and thought, and... Well, I think you should do that. I want to advocate for that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Joseph Mustachio?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is spelled M-U-S-T-A-C-H-I-O. I also live on Eastern Lake, and I've lived on the lake for about 20 years, and it's my primary residence. I'm also president of the homeowners association within our community, of which there are 23 lots, all of them affected by this ordinance. I'm also involved with the Eastern Lake Neighborhood Association, of which we have 70 members, and I can tell you around Eastern Lake, there's roughly 135 properties that front the lake and probably close to 300, within the 300-foot coastal Dune Lake zone. My involvement with the associations that I've been, just told you about, has led me to have a lot of conversations with various homeowners. And I can tell you that the Eastern Lake Association, homeowners association plus ELNA, totally supports protecting the coastal Dune Lakes. The residents in our community have done water testing throughout the lakes throughout the year. We've supported the protection of the shoreline, et cetera, et cetera. But I also will say that the position that's now being taken about enforcing the 25% rule kind of creates many, many concerns by many of us around the lakes, and the interpretation, or the recent interpretation that ordinance that goes back to the mid-1990s begs to ask the question as to why was it not supported over the last 20 years? And I believe the reason is because it wasn't right. I think a lot realize, people realize, that 25% is extremely restrictive, and trying to go back and rebuild our homes after a disaster, be it a hurricane, fire, or otherwise, would be virtually impossible to do. And for those of us that have been here long enough to experience situations like Opel, we know fully the fact that total destruction is a reality that we live with. So the question becomes, you know, what happens is if this is not changed? Well, our ability, as I mentioned, to rebuild our homes would be in peril, would also negatively devalue the properties around the lake, of which we've already heard, by county estimates, exceed 3,000 homes. And it would also have a dramatic impact on property sales. Also, the question has to be asked in terms of taxation, in terms of the value of the land, what is the tax base based on? And in fact, if we're devaluing the properties, is it not only going to impact the tax base of our taxes, but also eventually the millage rate that those taxes support? The question then is, and finally, I should also ask, because it also, from an insurance standpoint, we don't have the ability to insure our homes to the values that they are. In fact, my insurance agent made the point that would totally complicate the whole claim process.
Thank you, sir. Marcia Anderson.
Marcia Anderson, do I need to spell that? Anderson. S-O-N on the N. As y'all know, I am on the Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Board, and just listening to that gentleman talking about devaluing of their homesites, I don't understand how preserving the lakes... I mean, if we do not preserve the lakes, what are they going to turn into? What are they going to become? Seaspoles and slimy algae growers. If you don't listen to what Catherine has said and take into effect that if we don't do something to protect them, use the study that's coming up, protect the lakes, because that's what draws people here. And as you as the county commissioners, are here to protect our lakes. And we need to do what we can to protect them, because if the lakes dry up, or if the lakes become green blobs of algae, then nobody's going to want to live there. There won't be any fish in the lakes. There won't be the attractiveness that all the homeowners want. So my suggestion is to listen to Catherine, let the study take place, observe what they say, because if you don't, and then the state comes in and says you're going to have to change all this and you're penalized for it, why not help prevent that from happening for the county? Just please consider protecting our lakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Foreman? I'm sorry?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Cole Taylor?
Good evening. My name's Cole, and last name's Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R. Commissioners, I live on the lake over at Grayton, and I've kind of grown up on that lake my entire life, and I own property over there, and that's where we currently reside. And I'm all for protecting the lakes, and I agree with part of the, some of the study and some of the things she recommended. I think there's other issues. I think that, you know, homes further away affect, it's not just 300 feet, I think it's a lot of stormwater runoff. I think there's other issues affecting our lake than just the homes on the lakes. I feel like it's an imposition to penalize the residences that live on these lakes when there's a lot of other issues involved with the stormwater runoff. You can go down there to the public ramp after it rains, and it's incredible what you'll see. And none of that's coming from the houses, it's coming from the, all down Holtz Avenue. But I've studied what Wayne and them have come up with, and I think it's a very good solution to the issue that's affecting all these people that live on these lakes or have purchased property in this county. The 50%, and during the workshop that I went to, they said they wanted to address the stormwater retention from the homes themselves. I think it's a great idea. If they'll address those issues, I'm just, I think they're on the right path, and I think this solves most of the problems, the 50% rule, and be able to develop back on your footprint of your house is very important, because we all know it could get wiped out by any hurricane. And I was here during Opel, and I saw what can happen. And so that's a big concern for people that live here now and have invested in this area and love these lakes. I love them. And I will tell you this, there's more fish, more crabs than I've ever seen in my life. There's six herrings living behind my house on the lake, so the lakes are thriving, or at least the part that we live on is. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Elizabeth Cork?
No questions at this time.
Larry Pentel?
Good afternoon, Pentel, P-E-N-T-E-L. I'm in agreement, too. I live on the lake, like the lakes, love them, that's why I live there. But the current, as the current ordinance is now being enforced since May, it condemns thousands of houses, such as my own, that were built legally permitted. And to say I can't rebuild what I worked so hard and saved for is a pretty low blow by the county, to me. And there's a lot of other people in the same boat. I think you have to do something soon, rather than put it off for more and more studies, to where people can rebuild their houses. There will be catastrophes. It may not be a hurricane, it may be a fire, it only affects one person, but you will be condemning that one person's house if you do not act to let people rebuild. Another issue I'd like to bring up, it says, "For purposes of this chapter," on page three, "Tributaries are further defined as a creek, stream, river, or other water course that flows into a lake, larger river, Choctawatchu Bay, or the Gulf of Mexico. Any good environmental scientist could put every ditch along 393, most of them along 30A, 395, et cetera, et cetera, as a tributary. When it rains, they all flow into a Dune Lake, the bay, a bayou. All the mosquito-controlled ditches that were dug to drain 98 with no permits, but were dug by the state, flow all through north of 98 to the bay. All the county's ditches that were dug years ago with no permits, that the mosquito control maintains. All those are tributaries. I think that if this were to go to court, the way it's currently worded, you would be condemning a lot more than just those 3,000 houses that the other gentleman brought up. I think it would be more like 80% of all of South Walton County. Water's got to go somewhere. Where does it go? It goes downhill, it ends up in these tributaries, which are ditches along the road. I would like to see that drawn up as something other than just water flowing downhill. It may not affect me, but it will definitely affect other people like myself that have worked hard to own a house here. So, once again, I would ask you to act quickly and not let it go on to condemn all this property. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I make a quick comment? The language was added because we had, over the years, there has been some concern about what a tributary actually is. We were trying to provide further clarification of that. If I could, I'll ask Scott Kerway to kind of give the intent of that section and what we intended for it to cover.
The definition we used is intended to utilize natural water courses. So a ditch, a mosquito-controlled ditch or a highway, a ditch that runs along the side of the highway is not intended to be included as a tributary in this definition. We could probably clarify that by adding a natural water course.
It does not say natural. It says creek, stream, or other water course. Like I said, that pretty much, you've got 80% of South Walton County is within 100 yards of a water course.
Yeah, we can clarify that by adding natural in front of water course.
Okay, thank you. Jackie Markell?
Jackie Markell, M-A-R-K-E-L. I think one of the problems is that what is being proposed does not address small lots. And I think small lots are a big problem. I live on a small lot, 5,200 square feet. There are lots of small lots around Oyster Lake, Lake Allen, there are teeny weeny little dots of lots. This is not going to help those people. So I think the way we're looking at it as one size fits all, we're looking at changing the percentage for all lots, because there are some lots that have a problem. And I think we've got to identify the small lots before we can address this. I don't think we can address them all in one fell swoop, because this also means, I mean, like, whether people like what was given here or not, as far as the environmental data, when redevelopment happens, you are now saying that all the people that had built to a reasonable-sized footprint, I realize reasonable is subjective, can now double that size. And then you're going to have all that extra runoff and impervious surface loading into the lakes. And I just, you know, when I hear, "We've got to do this now, we've got to do this now," I think of how long we've been talking, we've been having workshops on beach vendors, how long we had workshops on parking, all these issues. We've had workshops, workshops, workshops. Now, all of a sudden, we've got to do this, we've got to make a decision quickly on this. I don't think that is, I don't think it's right, and I don't think it's fair. I think we need to address the problem, the issue, and I think the major issue is small lots. Let's see. And the gentleman who talked about stormwater runoff, absolutely. Stormwater runoff in general is a problem. And yes, the lakes are the lowest point, so the entire watershed around that lake is draining into that lake. But the last filter are the lots on the lake. And when you remove the natural vegetation and you replant it with landscaping, lawns, whatever you choose to make your yard look pretty, it doesn't have, it doesn't act in the same way. Maybe people who don't want to take on that stewardship shouldn't be living, or shouldn't be buying lots on those lakes. They should consider that and buy a different lot.
Thank you. Barbara Morano? Doug Lamb?
No questions at this time.
Marla Hannah?
I'll pass, thank you.
Matthew Jones? Richard Bryan?
Richard Bryan, B-R-Y-A-N. I'll spare you hyperbole. I simply would like to point out that if you take a look to the east of us in Bay County, you'll find what were once coastal Dune Lakes, which now fit the description that Ms. Gross gave you of what could happen. The second thing I'd like to say is the berm and swale is not going to solve the problem of nutrients getting to the lake. It is a retention, but then that retention is released into the ground in a concentrated form. It channels, and as a result of channeling, sets up areas in which water can pass fairly easily. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Harold Smith?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this issue. I think the big...
Spelling your last name is the usual S-M-I-T-H?
Oh, I'm sorry. Name is, I thought it was well-known. Harold Smith, and I live on Eastern Lake Drive, 168 Lake Point Drive. And my, I live on Lake, Eastern Lake Drive, 168, Lake Point Drive. And for many years, I was, uh, president of the Eastern Lake Neighborhood Association. And we care a lot about the lake as, find that many people do that live not only Eastern Lake, but others as well. We've, going back to, say, as early as 1993, through, may I say, mid-2014, at the time when the decision was made to implement a 25% restriction on footprint area of the It seems that, when we look at the record, that there was a period of about 21 years that everything was dormant, but it turned out to be that 21 years was right back in the middle of a real growth spurt down here. And in fact, if we go back to roughly 1980 through, uh, 2014, we'll find that, uh, the population has, has more than doubled. So we had a period there where, when we think about it, we're concerned now, we're 25 versus 50%, there was none. Most of everything that was built around Eastern Lake and the other lakes had no area or footprint-sized restrictions. So I think we have to say, well, what's, what's the overall condition of the lakes? Now, first of all, remember that very few houses are built now on the lakes. We and our community are just about built out. And it's expected that there probably will be a continued decrease in building on those lakes. Now, the, the concern has been voiced that if the restriction is adopted at a level of 50%, or excuse me, you know, 50% of the lots, that we really get into a serious problem of runoff, uh, nutrient enrichment, algae will grow everywhere, and property prices will do down and it'll be a disaster. But then you have to think, wait a minute, we've gone through this tremendous growth period from, let's say, 1980 on up to now, and we haven't had this. So the question then, I think, comes up, well, what has been the result of that?
Mr. Smith, thank you, your time allotment is up. Thank you. Not sure if this, Steve Springer, is it?
Springer, S-P-R-I-N-G-E-R. I live on Little Redfish Lake. Little Redfish Lake has an Olympic event going on right now. There are fish jumping all over the lake. We have alligators. We have herons all over the place. We have ducks all over the place. Despite what one woman here was saying, I live there and believe it or not, I don't want it to be a cesspool. Just because I'm against someone taking my house away from me if we have a hurricane? I paid $3 million for the house. If there's a hurricane, I won't be able to rebuild it the way it is. I'd like to know if any of the elected officials here ran...
Adjust the chair, please.
Pardon?
Adjust the chair, not the other Commissioners.
Oh, I'd like to know if there are any members of the Communist Party here.
Okay. You're out of order, sit down, please.
Out of order?
You're out of order. Michael Klein.
Dobies, D-O-B-E-S. I'd like to readdress the concern about all the little tiny lots that are a little bit, um, miniscule that we have, uh, subject to development. And as I understand it, it has been no opposition to the concept that these were hardship lot splits. And if they were hardship lot splits, they were never used for that capacity, uh, but they are still available to be developed. My concern is, when they were split, were the proper legal protocols followed? Did people actually receive notice that this was going to happen and they had an opportunity to object? All these little tiny lots are, you, you just can't put a, a three-story mansion without some really great disturbance of what's gonna go around them. So I would like to make sure that these little lot splits, and they're about postage stamp size, that are under, subject for, uh, development, are looked into, find out if they're actually legally done. Because when I first moved here in 1985, it was Judge Roy Bean and law west of the Pecos. Now, we've done a lot since then, but I am personally aware of a lot of protocols that weren't followed and they're not well documented at the courthouse, and so I'd really like that looked into. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Commander.
Wayne, can you tell me the, we're talking about small lots here. What is the smallest lot? Um, do you have any idea?
Um, Mr. Wick, that can be determined right now. We have a lot of data. We don't have the smallest lot. We have data that we're going through with GIS. This is the very, when you look at these, you have to look lot by lot by lot. We have data on the number of lots, so forth, but not the smallest lot.
Do we know how many small lots that fits your description are out there?
We, let's see.
Yeah, that's what, what do you determine?
That are around 3,011 square feet, 3,094 square feet. So we have several that are in the 3,000 range. Um, so that's, that's probably close to the bottom range, it'd be 3,000 square feet.
Commissioner Meadows, I recognize your question.
Uh, that was my question. When she said small lot, I just wondered what...
What, what's a threshold for being?
What constitutes a small lot?
Less than 200?
I'm not aware if we have a clear definition of small lots that pertains to these, these issues. Um, the smallest ten vacant lots, I'm reading off our list here, it looks like it's, uh, anywhere between 3,011 square feet and, uh, 3,500 square feet, if that's enough.
Range. But as far as a definition, we have on a small lot, um, I have seen some language as it pertains to a different section of the code that defines them as, I believe, a quarter of an acre. Um, but it was, it was a different, it was covering a different subject matter in the code, not necessarily this portion of the code. Does that provide any guidance for you?
I guess. I'm sure.
To be quite frank, there's really not a clear definition of what we consider a small lot.
But we do have the shallow lot.
Yes, ma'am. Shallow lot records vary, vary simply, two, less than 200 square, uh, 200 linear feet.
And I guess you could have a, you know, mini lot, you know. So the shallow lot, you can have also a mini lot.
You could.
Um, that would be less than something, something, and then special. Maybe that's how you...
You can have a short and small lot, I guess.
A lot.
A short and a small lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
And a big and tall, I guess.
Thank you. I need a page.
The last name is spelled P-A-G-E. I'd, I'd like to explore that a little bit further, what we're on right now. And that is, because, uh, I, I see a distinction between a lot of record, which was a lot, you know, planted on a dune lake before, I think it was June 6, 1993, and the lots that were planted after these rules came into effect. Now, I, I do know that after the rules came into effect, uh, the rules were imposed on the developers who were developing subdivisions at that time, Draper Lake, for example. Uh, the dune lake restrictions are clearly delineated on the platte. They were after 1996. So I guess I've got just a couple of questions that I have of staff, is, um, why are we, first of all, where did the 50% come from? And why is that being applied to everybody? As opposed to the lots of record, which seem to be, from everything I'm hearing, are the most problematic situations, is the lots that were planted at a time when there were no coastal dune lake rules?
Mr. Dice.
As far as the 50%, that's, that's a number that we, as staff, looked at, um, based on some of the problems we were experiencing with people trying to build on their lots. The 50% was a, a number that we felt like would probably adequately address most of the, of the problems that people were experiencing, not everyone, not all of them, a lot of them wanted to build larger. But we felt like the 50% was a number that was a reasonable number. As far as the lots of record, again, you know, the majority, I think, of our problems are coming from lots of record. I need to write, um, when you, when you had a new development coming in, the coastal dune lake protection zone was applied to those, generally was applied to those new developments. The lot of record, it was not. And we could find no distinction in the code that allowed us to, uh, apply a different standard to the lot of record. Um, and so that's why it is, it's being applied and has been applied.
And I, let me say, I do live on a coastal dune lake and I do live on a lot of record. Uh, but I live on one of the larger ones. So 25%, frankly, works for me. But I understand that there are a lot in the Eastern Lake, Oyster Lake, and Lake Allen, uh, which are, have, do have much, much smaller lots. But, and the coastal protection zone, which is a different, a different protected area, instead of the lakes, it protects the Gulf, but it's the same idea. You've got a setback and you've got a preservation area. Let me just say this very quickly, I have 18 seconds. In the CPZ, you kinda got the same issue. You got a lot of lots of records, you got big lot, you got little lots. And in the CPZ, it says, "If these regulations render a property owner unable to build a single-family dwelling on an existing lot of record as of the date, blah, 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 the owner shall be allowed to construct a single-family residential dwelling unit", um, you know, "provided they limit the disturbance to the minimum necessary to accommodate the dwelling unit, et cetera." Why can't we just take it from addressing the biggest issue, the lots of record, and I'm not, not that particular language, but why don't we take a lot of record approach and try to flesh out some provisions that might work, um, for the lot of record?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Page.
I also do have a concern about the stormwater. Oh, I can't say that in Zer. I'll put that in, in writing.
Mr. Chairman, I...
Sit down, please. You're not recognized. Sit down, you're not recognized.
Ma'am, you up next?
No, sir, you're not up next. Please sit down.
My name's Mary Konovsky, K-O-N-O-V-S-K-Y. And thank you Commissioners for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. First, I'd like to speak on behalf of the South Walton Community Council. I'm a board member and the position of the council is to leave the provisions that protect the coastal dune lakes as they are currently in the comprehensive plan and the land development code. And now I'm going to go beyond that and just speak personally. What I just heard Mr. Dice say, I thought was very interesting, that the 50% new proposed limit was a limit that was chosen based on its solving building problems. It did not take into consideration the effect on the environment or the effect on the lakes themselves and the health of the lakes. And I would like to at least propose a balanced approach. If we're going to come up with a percentage, let it be both a percentage that helps those who are having a hardship, um, with their building on the lake, as well as having a basis in the current science, which you heard earlier now exists. And, and I'll close with one final point that I want to reemphasize that, um, Catherine made in her presentation, and I've heard people make counterarguments. The counterargument is, if I can't build a big enough house, my lot value is going to decrease. My argument is, if everyone clears and makes the surfaces of their lots more pervious than the nutrient load in the lake can handle, that, as Catherine said, we already have, I believe it's eight or nine coastal dune lakes on the impaired list. In 2015, you'll find out if those lakes remain on the impaired list and if there are even more on the impaired list. The county is responsible financially for restoring those lakes to a level to get them off the impaired list. So there's a cost to some individual lot owners if they can't build the house they want. There is a huge cost and a huge burden to the county if those lakes remain on the impaired list and then the county is, um, regulated by FDIP to restore those lakes to a non-impaired status and pay for that restoration. So I, I think that financial aspect needs to be considered as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie McQuiston, M-C-Q-U-I-S-T-O-N. I live on Alligator Lake and everyone I know who lives on the coastal dune lakes loves them and wants to protect them. Language restricting development showed up in 1993. It was not enforced, uh, for 21 years. Last year, with the stroke of a pen, you implemented the restrictions. Almost every house built during these 21 years is non-conforming. Lots of record should be exempted from this ordinance and be required to meet setbacks, height limits, and neighborhood plans. If this ordinance is imposed on lots of record prior to 1993, it is an onerous taking of private property. Where did the original 25% magic number come from? There's no scientific basis for that, and just as there is no scientific basis for your 50% magic number. Where did the 300-foot setback come from? All of our coastal dune lakes flow in and out of the Gulf and they're constantly exchanging water. Where's the degradation over the past 21 years? I don't see our lakes in peril condition. Our, uh, the only devastation I have seen since I moved here in 1992 was from natural peril, hurricanes, and county, the county building dams and bridges with culverts on 38. So what are we trying to do? Protect the lakes from stormwater runoff? How did the focus become the disturbed area or buildable area of a lot? If a lot owner meets setbacks, height limits, and neighborhood plan, and most importantly has a stormwater retention plan, why would you care how big a house they built? It doesn't, uh, the ordinance, this ordinance proposed does not address pervious driveways like gravel, sand, and pine straw. Uh, porches on a house should, uh, you know, are, shouldn't be included. The focus of this ordinance should be on preserving our lakes with stormwater retention. A lot of that stormwater, we've heard, comes from north of 38, not the people on the lake. It should not, the focus should not be on limiting and in, and preventing the enjoyment of the use of private property. Time is of the essence. There are people all over now who are, cannot build on their lots of record, who cannot renovate their property. If you aren't going to act quickly, then at least suspend or cancel the ordinance that you passed last May so people can enjoy their property. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
One question for Wayne.
Go ahead.
What ordinance did we pass last May?
Uh, we, we didn't pass an ordinance. That's when we got together and evaluated the current language and the interpretation of that. That's when, there was no ordinance was passed.
We didn't adopt a new one. It was a interpretation of the existing comp plan.
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners, my name is Frank Day, D-A-Y. The coastal dune lakes are one of the few, um, real bright spots in Walton County that that makes us unique in the world almost. There's one other place, as a documentary filmmaker, Elam Stolffus, has recently pointed out, there's one other place on the other side of the planet that has a couple coastal dune lakes. So we're not unique in the world, just in 99% of it. The imperative of protecting these, some of you I know have lived, Commissioner Jones, on the Eastern Lake, uh, and you've seen development on that lake around you as well over the years. Now, several of these lakes have already been, uh, determined as impaired. I think we should hold off on, uh, advancing further development until we've heard from the lakes themselves through the science that they will tell us what they need. Ultimately... Ultimately, what's going to happen is, and most likely this is going to be the case, eventually the source of the damage to the lakes is going to be determined, and then we're going to look to people to blame for that necessarily, no. But to mitigate that, yes, that will be mandated. Now, are we going to look to residents in Paxton to mitigate that? How about Mossahed? We've got to look at this and make informed, intelligent decisions and wait for the science. And let's make our decisions based on the science. Thank you all.
Thank you. Susan Palladini.
No questions. It's Tom. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tom Patton, P-A-T-T-O-N, and I am the president of the Redfish Lane Owners Association. We have 10 lots directly on the lake, several other lots that would be affected by the 300-foot rule. I think the suggestion came up in November about spreading things to 50%. I think that makes life a lot more tolerable, and, but I think we need to go beyond that and consider the possibility of pervious driveways, as Ms. McQuiston just mentioned. There are people here on coastal dune lakes who have pine straw driveways, which right now, by definition, it appears would count, but there's all kinds of pervious surfaces out there that could be used for a driveway, because depending upon where you are on a lot and so on, the driveway and parking pad can be significant. We've also encouraged people to have more parking spaces through your discussion of parking. So I think we've got a conflict there. You can't ask people to tighten up the parking pad, which is being counted the same as a square foot in a house, and then all of a sudden tell them they have to have more parking because they've got a five-bedroom house, or a four-bedroom, or a three-bedroom, or two-bedroom house. I think we need to look at, we need to consider the possibility of disturbed areas between dumpsters, concrete trucks that back up out of control and whatever. In my 36 years in construction and development in Walton County, I've seen many, many problems develop. I think it's, the problem is use a fertilizer, which is largely related to turf. And if we, if you consider restricting turf throughout the lots to a very, very small level, I think you're going to eliminate a whole bunch of the fertilizers that are used. I also believe that it would be very wise, but there should be some way to repair natural areas. If a natural area is damaged during construction, let's take it seriously and let's figure out a way to repair that, because there are natural-like landscape plans, and we've all been involved, a lot of us have been involved in those, and they can be implemented. The other thing I think that we really need to look at is septic tanks. Regional has done an excellent job, and I think that's one reason why a lot of the lakes have improved, but we all know that in recent hurricanes, we've had many, many septic tanks sweep off of Gulf trays, for instance, and dump into little red fish. That cannot help the water quality. And until a septic tank fails, we can't get rid of it unless we offer an incentive. But there are still septic tanks, and I believe there are probably still septic tanks in Oyster Lake, Lake Allen, and this is a problem.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name's Jim Dixon, D-I-X-O-N, and I currently own a lot on Lake Powell, and I'm also considering buying a lot on Camp Creek Lake to build for my family because I love the coastal dune lakes. I'm a kayaker, fisherman, love the fact that most of our lakes do not allow motorized boats that give out gas and oil. I think that those are the things also that we should be considering on some of the other lakes as far as the usage of boats and, you know, engines that are powered by gas. I think we're also missing a little bit here on the true cause. I don't see where building is hurting our lakes more than all of the spraying, mosquito spray, pesticides, lawn fertilizer. I agree with the last comment about if we would just eliminate grass, because I don't want to mow grass anyway, so it's perfect to just have pine straw and that kind of thing and, you know, keep it to where we don't encourage people to use pesticides and fertilizers. The other part as a taxpayer that I'm really concerned about, I'm concerned that, you know, we're talking about property rights, and the scary thing for me is we're talking about a potential class action lawsuit that could be levied against the county. And who's going to pay when a judge awards a major award to the lot owners? Who's going to pay for that? The taxpayers are. And I just have, I'm worried that we're taking information from a thesis, a college thesis, and we're letting that determine something that could be a multimillion-dollar problem for our county and, you know, the legal ramifications of it. The part about the 50%, the part that is concerning there is why so drastic? I mean, why so huge of a, you know, you're taking basically 50% of what you, you know, people were normally building and cutting it all the way, you know, it's basically reducing the whole footprint by a whole 50%. Not allowing pea gravel driveways, you know, for that to be a part of the 25%. I mean, if you're coming from the street and then coming to your home, that's way far away from the lake. And we're not going to allow a driveway or pea gravel or something of that nature to count towards, I mean, it's going to count towards the 25%. I think decks, you know, an extended deck that goes out, you're talking about two wood posts. You know, that's 15 feet of deck space that you could have, you know, to enjoy the views of the water, and it's not hurting anything because it's just a piece of wood and some concrete that's holding it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name's Lloyd Blue, B-L-U-E. Thank you all for the opportunity to discuss this. Since the time that we're allotted is fairly short, I'm just going to try to hit a few bullet points that are mostly factual in nature. For background, I own a home on Eastern Lake in Lakewood. I also own a home on Greaton Lake, I mean, Western Lake in Greaton. And I've also done developments, both redevelopments with property that was pre-1993. I've also done new developments that were post-93 on the lake. And I've worked with the planning department and the county commission for in excess of 35 years, so I have a little bit of actual knowledge of interpretations and how things have gone. You know, the, I've also served as vice chairman of the Coastal Dune Lake Advisory Committee, and I was the county's representative on the Northwest Florida Wetlands Protection Task Force. So I have a little bit of a background in protecting the lakes, which are, you know, very important to us. The issue of what the county has done, and while I agree with Mr. Dice that there's been some difference in, I want to talk faster, some difference in interpretations, it's been very clear that after the adoption of the comp plan, that 25% rule was not applied to lots that were platted prior to the adoption of the comp plan. And particularly if you look at subdivisions like Greaton that were platted in 1890, you know, the county's interpretation was not to apply those and only to apply them to new developments that occurred. They did not apply them to redevelopments. That was the county's attorney's position. That was the planning department's position. I also had the county commission in 2002 verify that in writing. We submitted that to DCA. We had an opinion from the attorney for DCA that wrote the comp plan settlement, Mr. Goldberg, and we had DCA sign off on it. So there is a tremendous, you know, impact that's going to occur. I've spoken with the property appraiser's office. I would suggest that each of you, if you haven't, you should talk to the property appraiser about the effect that this is going to have on the ad valorem tax base, you know, for the county. I could not be more in favor of protecting the lakes. There are some very significant legal issues, you know, that are involved. Thank you. My time's up.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Larry Davis, D-A-V-I-S. Listening to the comments today, I want to encourage you to move forward and accept these changes. I also believe that it should be moved to the land development code to address individual problems, because this blanket cannot answer them all. Wayne and his team have been helpful in meeting with me on an individual basis that we've got some problems back in Old Seagrove, where we worked through the DEP in 2005 to get an Army Corps of Engineer and DEP permit because of this 100-foot setback. The buildable area that the state and the feds approved now will be too small to be able to build a house on. The conservation easements are already in place, so that's a take of that property value, and it will essentially be unbuildable. I want to ask about Mrs. Gross's presentation, because I think while there may be a nutrient, while there is a nutrient problem with the coastal dune lakes, as other speakers have addressed, I think a lot of that has to do with the septic tanks and with the storm water runoff. A lot of the new construction that may have occurred from the mid-'90s further, I've got to believe all of that has been on sewer, and that that is a huge effort toward protecting the dune lakes. When I look over the ordinance that's coming in here, as Mr. Pentel talked about, the creek streams and rivers that flow in there, my question for Wayne is about doggets in the canals that are listed as canals on the plat.
Not waters of the state.
I'm sorry?
Those are man-made canals.
So they're exempt?
Yes.
Great.
As our speed and control.
Okay. I want to encourage you to take action on this, and allowing it to go to the land development code will allow the variance process to take place that could allow us to be able to build on this lot. It's too deep, and because of the new 25%, there's still not enough room on there to build because of the conservation easements that were put in place as a requirement of the DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers. At that time, I believe Ms. Meadows and Mr. Jones were on the county commission, where we did in-kind services to help with the protection of Oyster Lake at that time to be able to meet these federal requirements. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ronald Velker, V-E-L-K-E-R, professional surveyor and mapper. I've been surveying around here for about, close to 10 years, seven of it, eight of it on my own. I've been in every coastal dune lake along here. I was an expert witness in a lawsuit where we determined certain things concerning coastal lakes. I can tell you, every coastal lake has its own individual flushing action, so they are all different. They all have their unique, own unique personality, so to speak. I've also been in probably just about every tributary around here, and with some certainty, I can tell you that most of the problem comes from the tributaries and the discharge into said tributaries, not so much the coastal dune lakes. But I did want to address a couple things that I saw in here. As far as the, in number eight on page five, that the, "All development shall be setback from the mean or ordinary hotter water line." It should be the mean-high water line. I'm currently working with the surveyor at FDLP to be more specific in these elevations. That way, everybody's working off the same page or same datum. Also, in regards to a tributary, I think it needs to be defined that a tributary be state-owned lands, because just about every creek and ditch and, or whatever, does flow into these tributaries. And unless there is a little bit better determination, we nail it down, I would think there's going to be a lot of gray area in determining what is and what is not a tributary. And typically, those things are determined based between private ownership and government or state-owned ownership. Also, I get calls all the time concerning this very issue. Based on my knowledge and the questions I've had asked of me, I believe that the 50% rule is a very fair rule. It provides what I would consider a happy medium between taking care of our coastal lakes and allowing these people to build on their lots. And so much, because it's so much development, it's not necessarily a problem of people that are starting to build now. It is more so, we're seeing the problems because of all the building prior to this. There's not very many lots that actually fall into the 300-foot zone that are still available to be built on. And to a point earlier about these posted-stamped lots, there are several lots I can tell you about.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for holding this workshop. Pat Blackshear, 103 Gut Point Road, and I live just off...
Spell Blackshear for us.
Pardon me?
Spell Blackshear for us.
B-L-A-C-K-S-H-E-A-R.
Thank you.
I want to quickly make my points, because I have, I represent several homeowners from some of the most green subdivisions along 38, that being Redfish Lane, Bannerman, The Retreat. And Steph has been wonderful to spend time with us to try to resolve some of the issues that we've had come up, and in some cases, we were down to, you know, a half a percent or 1% in meeting the 25%. But when you see that green of subdivisions having problems, we do need to do something. Now, you know, certainly the smaller lots need to be treated differently. But I wanted to speak also on my experience, 36 and a half years, and 10 years of that was on hands for the Northwest Florida Water Management District, helping put together programs under the SWIM at the Preservation 2000. And, you know, our focus there was totally to look at, you know, the science, look at the storm water runoff, to look at the level of treatment of that storm water level, to look at the exotics that were growing, to look at the hydrology of the lakes, or the water body, or the natural way, to prioritize any vacant lands that were in that watershed that could be purchased to help create treatment areas or preservation areas, and pursue funding for that, to look how we could mitigate the septic tanks. I mean, believe it or not, in Bannerman, we're on septic tanks. It's almost astounding to think that we're installing septic tanks for people to be in Bannerman. And yet, you know, they don't want to do that either. They want it to remain more green and protect the lake. But I feel strongly that we need to look at these vacant parcels that could be purchased with Restore Act funds or other funds. I think you should reach out to the Water Management District and DEP, because there's a lot of funding available right now that we could use to help solve this problem and it not just be a regulatory problem. That's what I see, is we're not looking at it broadly enough. We're only looking at it from a regulatory fix, and I think it has to be a two-pronged approach. And I would really like to stress another concern is, and I've seen it on Redfish, and we all love the bike path, but in many areas when the bike path was constructed, we feel stormwater swells to build it. And I've seen a great impact on Redfish, particularly by the bridge, from fragmody growth because of additional nutrients, because of the storm water not being treated coming in from the bike path. So I commend the commission for taking this time, letting them speak, but I think you need to look broader. Don't just look at it from the private property owners to try to fix the problem.
Thank you. You have to forgive me on this next one. I can read the last name, Garrett, I'm not sure what the first name is. Garrett?
Naya?
Nine?
It's like Naya.
Naya.
Yeah.
Not the trouble here.
Naya, yeah.
Okay. Are there any people out there who were unable to get to the sign-up sheets but wish to make comment? Are there any people out there who were on the sign-up sheet but passed previously but wish to now use the three minutes? Commissioners, any comments on your part? Please.
Maybe Wayne and the guys. When, on page 15, and I think it's repeated throughout the text, it says in the middle there, it says vegetarian, vegetative clearing within the zone is limited to that which is necessary to accommodate the 25%. What if the lot doesn't have any vegetation? What if the lot is already cleared? That's what kind of concerned me about that, is it says vegetative clearing. What if there is none? How do you?
So we have a lot that's devoid of any kind of underbrush or anything else?
Yeah, I mean, it's totally clear of, you know, and it's on a coastal Dune Lake, and it's within the 300-foot protection zone. You know, I think.
That's an interesting question. I mean, I guess in that case, there'd really be no.
I think you need to, I think you need to define, you know, clarify that we're, you know, that it's being protected, and it really basically is more of your, it's more of really your impervious surface area than it is your clearing, because some of these things have already been cleared.
That's right.
But just, and the other thing, the other comment I had was, should this go to, should this be approved and everything? If it goes to the board of zoning adjustment, you said five members of the board, shouldn't that be just a supermajority? Because what if there are only three members at the board meeting that night? And what would a supermajority be?
That's a good point, Commissioner. We could replace that, a supermajority of those in attendance at that meeting, we could replace that language.
Yeah, I think you need to, I think you need to do that, because if you're looking for five, you may, you may not get five people to show up. And that would be.
Commissioner, if I could, presently, for the board of adjustment, it requires four votes, four affirmative votes, to either overturn a direct determination or grant a variance. That's the number that's in the code right now. We're proposing to increase that to five.
How many people are on that board? How many seats?
Seven seats, seven seats, yes.
Seven seats, okay, all right. Also, too, when we're talking about tributaries, is there any way that you could, as part of this, map the tributaries that would be, I mean, map them and specify which ones are going to be looked at? And that way, you've got a map. You know exactly what you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am. We could do that, and we could, I guess we could probably publish that map in the comp plan and in the Land Development Code, too. I presume we could publish that map and say that these are the ones that are affected.
Right. And then there won't be any, you know, they won't come to planning and say, "Well, you know, we don't know about this, but here it is on a map," and we.
The map we have established and been working on is a generalization of the coastal Dune Lake protection zone without actually having a field survey and locating the boundaries of the creek or stream, and wherever the tributary is, you wouldn't know. What we, the method we utilize is use the USGS quad maps, and any solid blue line that extends from the lake, we count that as the tributary, and we extended that zone based off that solid blue line.
What if that is dried up? Because a lot, a lot of times, it'll show on a map, and then it will be dried up for three years.
Right. It would take, the surveyor, at the time of the building application, the surveyor would actually have to go out and make a determination if that is, meets the definition of a tributary. If it does not, then it would not apply to that lot. It would have to actually be determined in the field at the building application.
Really? Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Commissioner Jones, anything? Commissioner Chapman? Commissioner Commander?
No, but I do agree with Ms. Blackshear. I always appreciate her opinion on things. One of the things that we have to do is somehow get everybody off septic tanks, not only coastal Dune Lakes, the Gulf of Mexico, but the Chocahatchee Bay. And that's one of the things that we have been working on in the Restore, is hopefully we get money in our lifetime to be able to get everybody off of septic tanks, because it will make an amazing difference. I truly believe that. And I agree with the man that said he doesn't like mowing grass either. I don't believe that.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you for the various comments and the information that we received, and we look forward to working with you again on this. Thank you so much. This is adjourned.